Welcome again, everybody. I will officially call this meeting to order and if there are any other boards that also need to call their meetings to order.
We do. Blackstone Board of Selectmen. Dan Keefe. Brian. Tonya. Mary. And myself's here. We have.
Anyone else?
Jeff Silverstein, Blackstone Finance Committee. So I don't know if I need to call a roll, but we're here.
All right, so we'll officially open all of these meetings and we will go to the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the honor of our elected officials, one nation, under God, in the name of the Constitution, of the Constitution, and of the great justice.
And now we will go to introduction of members on the school committee. Blackstone.
Matt Catalano, Millville.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Chuck Dunton, Blackstone.
Dan Keefe, Blackstone.
Ted Novio, Millville.
Scott Hebert, Director of Facilities.
Jill Pila-Gallaroni, Assistant Superintendent Director of Student Services.
Jason DeFalcro, Superintendent.
Do you want to do all?
Sure, yeah, do the rest, why not?
Danny.
Lauren Taylor, Assistant Town Administrator, Town Accountant for the town of Blackstone.
Chad Lovett, Town Administrator for Blackstone.
Brian Scanlon, Board of Selectmen, Blackstone.
Ryan Chamblin, Board of Selectmen, Blackstone.
Tonya Bullock, Board of Selectmen, Blackstone.
Mary Bolso, Board of Selectmen, Blackstone.
Ross Nickel, Blackstone Finance Committee.
Mary Noble, Blackstone Finance Committee.
Jeff Silverstein, Blackstone Finance Committee.
James Watson, Blackstone Finance Committee.
Casey Vick, Blackstone Finance Committee.
Brad Boyce, Finance Committee, Town of Blackstone.
Peter Caruso, Town Administrator, Millville.
Jennifer Gill, Board of Selectmen, Millville.
Matthew Mealy, Board of Selectmen, Millville.
Sax Linsky, Blackstone Finance Committee.
And Roland Barry, Board of Selectmen.
I apologize, now we have to record, so I'll call this meeting to order at 6:35 of the Millville Board of Selectmen with three members present. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then we will turn our meeting over to Dr. DeFalcro.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Very, oh, a short one. Thanks. All right, good evening, everybody. Very nice to see all of you this evening. Nice for us to be together. I do know the Blackstone Board of Selectmen has a meeting at 7:30, so we'll move through our, you know, our slides and information as quickly as we can, but also as thoroughly as we need to, based on whatever questions that you all may have. But just wanted to make sure that folks know, so if they have to get up and exit, that's why. It's not something I said, although maybe it will be. But we're very happy to be here together tonight to talk about our FY25 draft budget, which, as everyone is aware, anchors back and all of our fiscal plans anchor back to our district improvement strategy. We have fondly referred to this as our District Blueprint 2.0 because we are in the second iteration of our strategic plan, which is quite incredible, actually. And just this morning, we had our district instructional leadership team together, which is comprised of our administrators, teachers from each of the buildings, instructional coaches, and students. And we spent a couple of hours this morning checking in on our goals, talking about academic progress that's being made across all of our classrooms. And there's nothing more powerful than sitting and listening to the kids tell the story. And so we saw certainly evidence of this alive and well this morning, and you'll see it show up throughout our presentation tonight when we talk about how we are allocating our resources and rightsizing our school system. That will be also another theme. Some of the guiding structures, other guiding structures to our budget, of course, is our academic data, as I mentioned a few moments ago, particularly as it relates to our MCAS 2023 data and our accountability data. So we have two essential state data points. One is just the academic testing, which is the MCAS side that looks at achievement and growth, and the other are all of the accountability components that give the district its overall accountability status as a school system with the Department of Education. Our school committee feedback from school year '22, '23, and that specifically relates to feedback on our goals as a district, where we've been and where we need to go next. My evaluation is obviously a big part of that as well. My goals are the district goals, as they should be, so you'll see some evidence of that feedback as far as our focus for FY25 and how we're connecting the fiscal resources to the actual work that we are going to be doing. And then lastly, our school community surveys. This is really, really important. We survey our families every year. We survey our staff, our students, every year, and we take their feedback very, very seriously. And so you will see and hear a little bit about some of the feedback we've received from our families and how that is showing up in our planning moving forward and the fiscal dollars connected to that. Just a quick highlight on our student enrollment, our demographic. We have stabilized our enrollment, which is great. Right now, we're just around 1,515 students, so I think 1,513 at last count, but we do get new students that enroll on a weekly basis. This is a breakdown of the demographic to give you a sense of who our students are from this perspective, and I won't read all the numbers off to you, but you can get a general sense outside of the racial demographic in terms of our English language learners. You can see that we're actually up just over a percent from last year. The percentage of students whose first language is not English, we're just under 8%, so that's up again a percentage point from last year. Our students with special needs and then high needs. And just as a reminder, high needs are students who are economically disadvantaged and any one of these other categories. So it could be a student with special needs, it could be an English language learner, and they also are economically disadvantaged. So again, just to give you a sense, this shows you a snapshot, and this year, we're up about 3% over from where we were last year.
Can I just ask a quick question? So can they be just economically?
Yes, and be included. Yeah, and so our economically disadvantaged numbers, just so everyone has a quick sense of how we get that. We used to have the old free and reduced lunch forms, and folks probably are familiar with that process, but a few years back, the state changed the way that they calculate that number, and now they look for families who are participating in a state system, like SNAP, and, you know, they have others, but that's, you know, food stamps is one of the main services. And so they look for families, and they call it certifying families, so they will look through all of their other databases, and then they'll come up with our economically disadvantaged numbers. So just to give everybody a sense, there is typically a population of families that are not captured in that number, that qualify, but for one reason or another, do not sign up for those services. So our number is, and it's not unique to us, but typically, the numbers are on the lower side of where they actually are. So our state-determined measures, and, you know, each year, we spend just a couple of minutes in talking, in talking a little bit about this. This is really important data. This talks a bit about how we're doing, how we're performing, as it relates to the goals that the Department of Education has put out in front of us, as far as our academics and some of the other accountability measures. Overall, as a system, we are making moderate progress towards our goals, and that is actually a state indicator. That's how the Department of Education has classified the district. So we are making, we are making nice progress and moving in the direction that we are required to by the Department of Education. None of our schools within the district acquire any level of assistance from the Department of Ed and haven't, not only the past six years, but prior. So the district has a long history of being able to maintain, manage, and operate its own, its own system, in all, in all senses of that. Our graduation rate is right around 92%. Our drop rate, so students that did not make it through BMR, is 1.7%. Just, and again, we mentioned this last year, but I want to, I want to highlight this again because it continues to happen. Because of the way school choice is, and the way that school choice functions, we have school choice across all of our, across all of our buildings and all of our grades. So what will happen is we may have a student from a neighboring district who was on the verge of withdrawing or dropping out from that high school, they have a conversation with their guidance counselor to give them the old pep talk and say, why don't you go, you know, try BMR? They have school choice, you know, give it a, give it a reset, give it another shot. They end up registering with us, and sometimes they don't show up, and we take them as a drop in our roster. It's a strategy that, within our superintendent network, we've been pushing very hard on one another to stop, and I can tell you that is not, that is not a way that we function here with our colleague school districts, neighboring school districts, but just be aware that in that 1.7%, which is still a very low percent, all of the students that account for those numbers are not necessarily BMR students. They may have registered, I think we had two or three, and they didn't, one came for a day and the other two didn't show. We take them on our rosters. Underneath, underneath the drop rate are the MCAS results. These are from spring of '23, and you can see, these are just the aggregate scores. We do a very extensive presentation in the fall, I'm sure many of you have seen it. We send out the slide deck, we send out the video link to our families, so everybody knows exactly how we're performing, how we're doing. We are very close at state averages with the percent of meeting or exceeding expectations in grades three through eight, ELA in math, grades five and eight, science. We are a bit below, but we are in a curriculum revision year right now for science, so we're in the process of revising our curriculum. You'll see that come up this evening as one of the factors in our budget. Our 10th grade ELA, we're just below the state as far as meeting and exceeding numbers, and we've got some work to do in math. We are about 14 points below where the state average was for math. But as I mentioned earlier, we just had a really impactful middle-of-year data meeting with our district ILT, and we're able to see firsthand some of the great progress that the students are making, both in ninth and 10th grade, as it relates to both ELA and math, in achievement and in growth. So we're really pleased about that, and we'll be sharing.
Sorry. I thought you were done. On the MCAS scores, do 100% of students take those?
Yes.
Okay, so even, doesn't matter if high needs, special needs, all that, they all take the test?
So we have a small number of students that qualify for the MCAS alt.
Okay.
And I think we are over, just over 1% of students, Jill, is it 1.5, I think, that take the MCAS alt. So they work all year with their teacher to put together a portfolio that shows competency on particular standards.
Okay, thank you.
Some of the other factors that are important to mention, all of our schools made significant progress on the chronic absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism, just as a quick reminder, are students who miss 10% or more of the school year. That's a lot. That's 18 days or more out of the school year. We exceeded all of our targets there. And so to our families and friends listening at home, we've got to keep getting our students to school every day, and our student support teams work tirelessly at that. We have administrators who buy alarm clocks for kids, they do wake-up calls in the morning, we do home visits, knocking on doors, and, you know, this certainly is not a judgment statement. We have parents that work overnights, that work multiple jobs, kids are trying to get themselves up in the morning, get to school on time, and it's hard. So we definitely do a lot of work in that space to help get our students to school on time each day.
Did you see an uptick during COVID with everyone working from home and just saying, my kids can stay?
Yeah, for sure, and it's definitely been a bit of a reset around expectations around that. So recently, the past couple of months, we've been sending out our weekly attendance rates to families by grade, so they can see, like, we're showing them, this is how, you know, this is how all of our grades did this week, this is how it's comparing, you know, from the start of the school year till now, just trying to bring an awareness to it. We can't teach to empty seats, as we say, so we're working hard on, on our attendance. The high school also received all of its points for engaging students in what's referred to as rigorous coursework, which is incredible. So we've exceeded the target number for advanced placement student enrollment at BMR. Some, you know, some really good progress there. And just along those lines, we had 74% of our students pass their AP exams. That's pretty significant. That means that they scored a three or higher, and those are all college credit courses. So students that received a three or higher will be able to essentially exam out of the course at college and saving their families lots of money. So really pleased, we've got a lot of work to do still, but we've made a lot of progress in the past few years, for sure. So shifting gears and talking a little bit about what's driving our budget, again, you know, sharing a little bit about our demographic to give you a sense of our student population and some of the need there. We are in our, we'll be in our third year of our second iteration of our strategic plan, our Blueprint 2.0, as I mentioned, which is, which is pretty incredible. We've done a ton of work to move those initiatives forward towards the outcomes and goals that we're seeking to meet. We have about 50% of our students classified as high needs, and again, we just saw the numbers, well, 46%, but about half the students in the districts are classified, in the district is classified as high needs. Of course, looking at our potential school reconfiguration, we're going to talk a lot about that tonight, and we'll get into the actual specific numbers, so you all have a sense of exactly what this reconfiguration is going to save the district and our communities. Of course, we keep our focus on minimizing those non-academic barriers, and we mentioned attendance, that's a good example of one, to help, you know, get our students to school, to help them stay focused, to help them keep learning and move along their academic trajectory. The focus for this year has been on revising our science curriculum, so you'll see that in our budget, we are looking to move forward of purchasing a new core science program, and our Science Curriculum Committee has been hard at work since the fall, studying different research-based programs, materials, labs, to make sure that we're putting the best science materials in the hands of our staff and students. And I just want to make a note on this, because I think it's important. Those that have been, you know, kind of following this work or, or supporting, paying attention to this work the past six years, we put a robust curriculum revision and renewal cycle in place six years ago. We started with science. Some of you might remember that have been, have been along for the ride for that long. Since then, we have new curriculum in place, all research-based in science, social studies, literacy, and math, K-12, and we've actually built it down into the PK, so that we have their PK programs that will help feed into our kindergarten. And now we're in our second iteration, doing science again. I mention that only because I would challenge any system in this area, in this region, up against what we've done as far as curriculum. And that is a testament to the individuals in the classroom, but also to the individuals around this table, because that's an investment. It's important that we're putting the best materials, research-based materials, in the hands of our students and our staff. So a big thank you to everybody for the support in that. Very proud of the work we've done in this space. And then lastly, looking at ways, one of the things that we heard a lot in our parent survey last spring was trying to find ways to engage students outside of the classroom. So we have the same, you know, cluster of about 250 students that are involved in everything, athletics, music, you know, marching band, clubs, drama, and that's wonderful, but there's a lot of students still that we need to work to engage in after-school activities to really expand their learning opportunities beyond the school day. And we've done this through some grants we've written for after-school programming. Some of you may have heard of the 21st Century Learning Center Program that we have at our elementary level. We've got about 100 students that participate. That grant is $176,000 a year to run that program that also runs through the summer. We need to do more, and we're looking at doing more. We want to keep our kids engaged and learning year-round, not just bell-to-bell, but after school as well, and how do we expand those learning opportunities for kids? That was a really important piece of feedback we heard from our, directly from our parents on that. Some other factors that are driving our budget, and I'm sure, you know, many of those around the table, health insurance increase. We have an increase of cost and use, both for this year, the current fiscal year, as far as the number of employees that have opted for health insurance. Private school and collaborative tuition. We have students, not many, I think we're down to about 15 or 16, thereabouts, that go out of district for services. When I started, and Jill started in her role six years ago, I think it was about 26, so in the past six years, Jill and her team have built an extensive number of programs to try to bring students back into the system. And so we've been able to serve a lot more of our student needs here, but with that, those that do need to go out, we've still seen a significant increase in private school and collaborative tuitions, around 4%, just so I'm putting a number to it, if you're wondering what significant is. Our facilities needs, faculty and staff contractual obligations, our minimum local contribution, which we'll talk about shortly, utility costs, I'm sure to no surprise of everybody else, we're also seeing a large increase there, and a significant loss in state and federal funding streams. And I would argue to anybody who will listen, we don't have a budget problem, we have a funding stream problem. And we're going to see the exact numbers of what I mean by that this evening. So with that, our current operating budget for FY24, and this includes, this does not include, rather, our charter school sending tuition or school choice sending tuition. So I want to make sure that I'm clear about that. Those two other items are about $2 million. We don't control those. Those tuition dollars are assigned to us from the state, particularly for smaller systems like ours. Charter schools are one of the worst things that could happen to a school district like ours, because we actually, just to make sure everybody's aware of this, families do not pay tuition for charter schools. The school system pays it, and we assess the towns at the end of the day for that, and that number is assigned to us from the state. So I just want to make sure that we're on the same page with that. It does not bring in tuition or revenue to the, to the communities or to the, to the district itself. It actually costs, in BMR's case, it'll cost us about $1.2 million next year to have kids at, at the Franklin Charter School, is where our students go. And that's separate from school choice dollars, just FYI.
And how many students is it?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I'm not entirely sure what our charter count is at this point. We, and I know I've shared it with this group prior to this, but we saw a large increase in enrollments. It was about four years ago Franklin had their charter expanded, the Benjamin Franklin Charter School had the charter expanded to open another thread of classrooms, okay, one, two, et cetera. And when that happened, we saw a significant loss in students. I believe it was somewhere around 40 that year. We haven't seen anything like that since, of course, but it's, it is very harmful as far as our local school district is concerned, and frankly, to the budget. With that, our operating budget, when you back out our charter sending tuition and our school choice sending tuition for FY24, just as a reminder, it was $27,979,934.14. Next year, our FY25 budget is actually coming in at $27,890,9234. So our budget is coming in at about $79,000 less next year, and we're going to talk about all the reductions and how we got there, and what still the impact is to the overall assessment to the towns as a result of the loss of revenue. So when we started this process, we looked at, as, you know, as a lot of departments do, you look at your, your, your kind of prime optimal budget, like, what is it that everybody needs? You put everything in, and then from there, you start prioritizing based on, you know, what's reasonable, what, you know, what can we keep in place that will allow us to support the strategic plan? What can we back out of the budget with, with it minimizing the impact to the students? That has to remain the key priority in all of this. So you can see the top number, and I just want to share it just as a starting point. The operating budget started around 30.3, so that was the starting point. Clearly, that was not a number we were going to move forward with, but I wanted to show everybody, because when you take into account the increase in expenditures and you take into account the loss of revenues, which we'll get into momentarily, you can see the increase is quite significant to both of the town assessments. So clearly, that wasn't a viable option for the school committee nor the administration, and that's not what's in front of you tonight, but I just wanted to give everybody a sense of the starting point. If you look at the bullet below, that outlines what a level-funded budget would be. So that would mean just the exact same dollars that we have this year for FY24, rolling it forward to FY25. We also, as you know, we did not come in with this amount. We came in a little bit lower than this. The reason that that is such a large increase is because of the loss of revenue streams, and we're going to delve into those in a minute. But before we do, I want to, and I'm going to hand these around, show everybody exactly what was removed from the budget, so that you all have a sense of the reductions and how we got to where we are now. That's the, can you click the other? There should be another one there. And you know what? It's okay if you don't have it. Everybody has the handout. Yeah, that's fine. So we can just take a minute, and I'll walk through what is in front of you as far as the FY25 budget reductions. And I want to bring to your attention, and I'll wait till everybody has it, if you look at the front side that says FY25 budget reductions, February 2024, the top piece of this is really important, because, and we are very appreciative to both Boards of Selectmen, that we're in support of taking, you know, again, it was a symbolic vote, but taking a vote to move the public hearing date to allow for some grade reconfiguration, because with that, we were able to save just under $700,000. The total amount that we saved was $695,913, and honestly, it's even a bit more. And we'll talk about that in a moment. When we look at the backside, through essentially eliminating a team of, a school-based team, i.e. a principal, a nurse, head custodian, all the custodial supports, all of the things that come with running a school, we are actually, were able to save quite a bit, which is, which is really important, not only in this fiscal cycle, but also in future budgets. These are not dollars that you will see come up in our budget requests again, so we're really pleased with that. We were able to save about $133,000 in utilities, grounds, and maintenance as a result of the grade reconfiguration, and about $20,000, $21,000 in some transportation shuttles that we had, just by simply moving the eighth grade. So if you, actually, if you'll flip to the back for a moment and take a look at that bottom tier where it says 11 additional staff salaries and benefits, there's another $814,000 in personnel. I believe the total is about 19 full-time personnel that we were able to eliminate as a result of consolidating grades and bringing together teams of teachers. You can find a lot of efficiencies when you bring the grade spans together in the manner that we did, particularly as it relates to shared staff. So we were very pleased to be able to do that. We also have maintained our class sizes, just so everybody has a sense. Right now, kindergarten in first grade, we are still on par to have about 18 to 19 K&amp;1 students in a class next year, and for grades two through seven, we are still looking to be around 23, 24 students. So the classes are very reasonable. I know there has been some, some public conversation, I know, because I've seen it in some of our surveys from our families recently, that the class sizes have ballooned and they're really out of control. They're very reasonable. We're keeping them small on K&amp;1, that's where the kids are learning how to read, learn how to count, and frankly, from two through seven, 23, 24 students in a class is not, is not a significant number. And I would also argue that in the past, when we've seen a random uptick in student enrollments at a particular grade, we've never not found a way to, to bring a teacher on board if we need to. We haven't had to the past couple of years, but just to allay any concern that the community might have, we have always found a way to do that if necessary.
Just a quick question. So the staff reductions that were done, are they mainly administrative versus like not taking away from actual, like, classroom instruction, et cetera?
So there, the, the first round of consolidation cuts, so if you look at like that front side, that 700,000, those are all administrative. If you were looking at the backside, that bottom tier where there are 11 additional If you were looking at the backside, that bottom tier where there are 11 additional, these were additional positions that we didn't need because we brought the staff together. And we actually are able to utilize the staff that we have better because we have more kids in one space. So because we are actually, we will be functioning as three specific schools next year, we were able to merge staffing and service. If you look at the staffing patterns for next year and the student enrollments, we're about 500 students in each building. And that actually allows us a lot of flexibility with our staff. And that's with the class sizes that I mentioned.
Jason, with the realignment, does this essentially mean that regardless of what happens with Millville Elementary's water situation, that that building is no longer part of the future plans, at least the near future, of the BMR School District?
So the plan, the hope is, and the plan is, that as the school committee voted on February 8th, I believe, to not return the students there for next school year, school year '24, '25, but to return the students to Millville Elementary for school year '25, '26, so that they are still very much in the overall school district plan. Some have asked questions about the feasibility study. It's important to note, the feasibility study in our statement of interest because we have to put together, we had to put together a model. We had to propose a plan to Mass School Building Authority. The plan we put forward was a two-building school district, right? So essentially, and I know many of you recall all this, but to essentially convert this building into a PK 2.5, and then to do an additional renovation on the high school and have a 6 through 12. Whether we land there, truly, that's going to be up to the community at the end of the day. But that was what we put forward. So in the interim, our preschool through grade three students will be at the complex next year, but the goal is to bring them to MES the year after.
A question. On the reductions on the backside, maybe it's my hearing, is this a reduction in what is there this year? And you're actually cutting people out? Or is, exactly what is that?
Sure. So these will be reductions that will be made at the end of the school year for next fiscal year. So these are, these are actual positions that are in place that we are going to be able to remove from the budget and remove the positions from the district for next school year or fiscal year '25.
Where are you capturing the moving costs to move the eighth grade or any work that might need to be done to house them?
So they're actually in, the moving costs are in the budget. They're in the operating budget. And that was why, I'm glad you asked, Eric, because that was why we were really clear when we posted the number, that is our operating budget. That won't be the certified final budget because the certified final budget includes the charter school sending and the school choice sending tuition. And those are on the preliminary revenue and assessment sheets that I have for everybody tonight, too. So we'll get a chance to see what that actual number is. But those moving costs are built into the operating budget.
Are there any significant capital needs associated with any of the three remaining schools on the horizon for next fiscal year?
Sure. So the capital, capital costs for next year essentially are just the debt exclusion costs to each of the communities. And then we are looking at some small projects, one in particular where we'll, you need some mini splits for this building, and looking at doing some cleaning on some of our air vents and, you know, HEAC systems, those kinds of things, but nothing of any significance at this point. And as you can see, as it relates to the other reductions, you know, essentially their materials, resources, and the total of all of the reductions regarding positions, salary, benefits, materials, resources, supplies are just under $2.5 million. So that $2.5 million reduction is what got us to a budget moving forward next year. That's about $79,000 less than where we are this year. Jess, can I have the slide deck back up, please? Were there any other questions on the reductions before we move on? So here's really where a significant part of the story comes in. In the governor's budget, we are going to be receiving about $130,000 less this fiscal year '25 than what we received in fiscal year '24. And again, when you look at the cherry sheets, and I know many of you have seen them, there's a series of receipts and a series of charges. So when you do all the math and you shake it all out at the end of the day, we're going to have $130,000 less in revenue from the governor's budget. So you add that to S.R. funds, which are gone. So we, you know, those, we had to remove as a funding stream out of the assessments for next year. We use an additional $380,000 in Circuit Breaker, which is special education grant funding. We use $500,000 of E&amp;D to offset the assessments last year as well. That's $1.4 million when you pull all of those revenue streams together. On top of that, the minimum local contribution increased for both communities over 6%. And when you look at the top bullet, we used those revenue streams to offset the assessments to the town. So we had a challenge on the expenditure side, which we needed to get under control. We needed to get the positions correct and right-size the system. We needed to look at the materials, resources that we could decrease. We did all of that. But we have a revenue challenge. And that's what I meant about, we don't have a budget problem as far as mismanagement or issues or challenges on overspending. We just simply have reduced as much as we can at the tune of $2.5 million, but we also lost about $1.4 million in revenue that we were using to offset the assessments to both towns last year.
This is common across the Commonwealth, though, right? Like, this is not uniquely Blackstone.
No, no.
This is across the state, seeing the lack of revenues.
And frankly, one of the things that has been such a significant help, and again, I know I said it already, but were the boards of selectmen with the school committee taking action to move that public hearing date for us. Because if we didn't have that, we would be coming forward with a much larger budget than what's in front of you. We'd have to, because we'd be running four separate teams of staff. Like, we wouldn't have a choice. But because of that, we were able to reduce the budget by the numbers I just showed you.
Could you, when are we going to get a side-by-side budget with this year's appropriation by line item and for the '25 year, those appropriations by the line item?
Yeah, so we have that. So we have that. We can certainly share that with the town administrators as far as the, all the function codes and what we had. I think, remember last year, we looked at it and it showed what we had in the prior fiscal, the current fiscal year next, and then the difference?
I thought that was what was coming out tonight.
We're going to look at, actually, we're going to go even further than that, and we're going to go into the assessments, so you can actually see what the draft assessments are. And with that, I'm happy to send those to the town administrators so that you all can take a look at them.
Well, I'm not happy with not seeing it tonight.
Thank you. Noted. All right.
Dr. DeFalco?
Yes.
So can you dive a little bit more into like what S.R. funds are and Circuit Breaker funds? Because my understanding, and I learned this from my best friend Peter, S.R. funds are given to, or to school districts to cover one-time expenses. So those one-time funds should, once those expenses come out, those funds should, is that a correct statement or?
Not necessarily. So we use them for one-time costs, but they actually didn't have those restrictions on it. One of the things you're seeing, or you might see or hear about, that other districts are facing, we're facing this challenge, but for a very different reason, was a lot of districts use those dollars to do a ton of hiring. So they hired a lot of bodies with that money. We did not do that. And I, those of you that were here when we got those dollars, you might remember me standing in front of you at your boards of selectmen, committing to you not to do that. And we did not do that. The positions that, the couple of positions that we did bring on, we actually either have eliminated them already, or we rolled them into the general budget because we knew we need them for the long haul. What we did with S.R. money was essentially take the $430,000 and we just applied it to different things within our budget that we could use as an offset. So we literally assigned it to different costs in order to get your assessments down last year. So it wasn't connected to a particular person, but you know, you can look at all the eligible expenses for that and then literally use it as an offset instead of the local budget. So that money sits in a unique fund code. And so we just charge those to that fund code.
Okay. And then Circuit Breaker?
It's Special Education. And that has a particular threshold that we have to meet in order to spend it as far as how to utilize those dollars. You might remember, in last year's budget, we used $880,000 of Circuit Breaker money to offset your assessments. That is a huge amount. We used everything we had to get your assessments down last year. We're fine. We have, we have a projection of, you'll see in this year's budget, about $500,000 of Circuit Breaker that we're going to use again. But over time, it's not, that isn't a sustainable number to use that amount. And it can only be used for special education, like tuitions or salaries or transportation. Anything else on this piece? Okay, so let's look at the overall impact. So what is coming around is the draft preliminary.
Dr. DeFalco, we probably, we, the board of selectmen at Blackstone have about five minutes.
Oh, no problem. Yep, we're just about done. So what's coming around is the draft preliminary revenue and assessment sheet. And that is what's up on the screen here. So you can see the total, and this was important, I wanted to mention this. If you look at the school choice sending tuition, that's at the tune of just over $840,000. Our charter school sending tuition is just under $1.2 million. So those two sending tuitions have to be added to the operating budget. So that's why we separate them out this way, so you actually can see what it costs for us to run our school system, because it doesn't cost the $29.9 million, it's actually about $2 million less. And those school choice and charter numbers are, those are, again, those are assigned to us from the state, on our cherry sheets. The numbers that are highlighted in yellow, those are highlighted in yellow because those are our estimates. This is where we've been historically as far as some of the receipts and some of the estimated offsets that we've used from user fees and tuitions. And again, just so that you're all clear, we get cited, the school district gets cited in our audit every year. The auditor does not like the way we set our budget up because we show every single penny we have and we actually calculate it as an offset. A lot of these entitlement grants are supposed to be outside of the general ledger budget. They shouldn't show up here at all. But that is not how we set our budget up. We put everything in for expenses and we put everything in for revenues so that towns can see every penny we have and everything we need to spend. And so, you know, we remain committed to using that type of approach because it's just more information for all of us. But the numbers in yellow are estimates. And if you go to the bottom right-hand corner, you can see the breakdowns. You'll see Blackstone's assessment in what, so that you wouldn't have to pull out your calculators and start calculating numbers. We did all the math for you right here, so you can see what the difference is in the assessment for FY '25 to FY '24. And you are probably wondering, how is it our budget's coming in $80,000 less and the assessment is still up over 6%? It's because of the loss of revenues. If you go over to the column that says minus state revenues, and you remember those numbers from last year, we had $880,000 in Circuit Breaker, we had $500,000 from E&amp;D, we have $430,000 from S.R., S.R. 3. We just don't have that. We don't have those dollars. And then we also have a loss of revenue from the governor's budget of $130,000. So if you do the math, it's clear to see where those increases are coming from.
So Dr. DeFalco, just to be clear, the yellow estimates, do we know when those will become actuals and not estimates, round about?
Yeah, so the school committee will have its public hearing on the budget and budget certification on March 7th.
Okay. And then the $736,274, that's the increase we're looking for from last year's operating budget?
That's right. Yep.
What are the base assumptions? You've got union contracts coming up that you're, I'm assuming, negotiating right now. So what are the base assumptions that you're using for '25? Because you don't know yet.
Right. So we're negotiating Unit C right now. And then Unit A is actually going to be negotiated next year, and there increases 2.75.
Okay. So say beyond the anticipation that you'll achieve that in the negotiations, what about the overall cost, not just salary increases, but the actual cost in terms of, you know, a teacher may get a salary increase plus a step increase and other things? So what will that, what are the assumptions that underlie these estimates with that?
So you're referring to teacher step or lane changes in a COLA, cost of living on top of that?
Right. They all have to be funded.
Of course. And so with the reduction of staff, 19, 20 staff, and again, from various units and many from not at all in a bargaining unit, there are individual contracts that are not in any bargaining units that are included in those reductions. You know, those numbers are all backed out, not only of this year, but next year's projections as well. So we do have a handle on that and we know, we know where we're going to land. What is uncertain is the particular COLA amount or cost of living amount for Unit C and then the cost of living amount for Unit A when we start negotiating in FY '25. That we don't know yet.
Well, Dr. DeFalco, we got to run to our selectmen's meeting. We really appreciate this preliminary information. Obviously, we'll know more after March 7th, and I know you and the new town administrator have already started a great working relationship. So we really appreciate this. Sorry we have to run. To our friends in Millville, it's always a pleasure seeing you, and I hope you guys have a good meeting.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Motion to adjourn made by Brian. Seconded by Tanya. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Dr. DeFalco, just one quick question on the middle column.
You can keep Danny.
The $100,000 and $75,000 are revenues?
Yes, those are revenues, so that.
Expletions for those.
Yep. So the excess and deficiency, we're thinking this year will come back certified, somewhere around $240,000. So the school committee is going to move $100,000 of that forward to offset the assessments. And we're looking this year to be able to purchase some of the supplies and materials for next year out of this year's budget. So that's at the $75,000, again, to try to get the offset in place and reduce the assessment to the communities. Other questions on this?
I just want to thank you again for coming and giving me the private tutorial on this in my office with the chair of the finance committee. So we got a heads up on this, and appreciate it.
And before I leave, I'd be more than happy to hand deliver Mr. Watson that item by item.
Thank you. And we're happy to send that along, like we did last year. And actually, it's color-coded, it's easy to see. You can see each one of the function codes, how much is in each, the change, and then what the projected FY '25 dollar amount is and what the total budget amounts are. So I'm happy to send those along to you. And then can we go back to the slide deck? Jesse, please. And then just our next steps to continue to monitor state and federal funding. We'll be watching very closely for any changes, particularly in the state budget as it relates to, you know, increase in revenues, we hope that we could see. Although we're being told by legislators to budget very conservatively for next year, I'm sure you're getting the same message. We have our public hearing for the FY '25 budget and the vote for certification on March 7th. That is also the night of the public hearing for the school grade reconfiguration hearing and vote. So to our family and friends tuning in at home, please do join us. It's a great opportunity to share your insight and your input on things. And also along those lines, I want to thank the over 400 families that participated in the survey. And I think, Jennifer, I think you had even reposted it saying, you know, encouraging people to take it. I think we had about 407 families take it and staff, which is great. So a big thank you to everybody that took the time to give us your feedback. Tomorrow night, we have Tomorrow night, we have a virtual, we seem to get better turnout virtuals, so we're doing a virtual Q and A with our families and staff. And we're going to start that regarding the school grade configuration. We're going to start that with coding all of the questions and topics that we got from the survey so that we can address those specific concerns upfront in the meeting tomorrow night. So I did email out the link a couple of times, everybody to tune in. Please do feel free to share that with anybody, and a lot of you post things, it'd be great if you want to post that, the link to the meeting. But again, March 7th for the school committee public hearing on the budget and the grade reconfiguration, and then of course, the annual town meetings.
Where will those be held? In the high school auditorium or where?
The public hearings, well, I believe we're doing them here.
In this room?
Yeah.
I'm expecting a big crowd, I guess.
Is the virtual meeting tomorrow night, is that for parents only or parents and people of the town?
Anybody can tune in.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yep. And there's an opportunity, so we're going to address a lot of the questions and comments that people put in the survey. But there is also a mechanism for sending in questions. So we also included in the email, Jesse DeFoe's email. So all questions can be emailed straight to Jesse, and then he'll send them over to us to answer. So we've got a mechanism in place to make sure that those that are live that might have questions can have those answered, too. Anything else? And our next steps, we'll stay very close in touch with all of you. More than happy to join a finance committee, board of selectmen meeting to talk about this, to get into the numbers, answer any questions that you might have as we go through the spring. You know, please reach out. I know 6% is a big percentage. None of us have taken that lightly at all. You can see the work we've done to try to get here. If you have follow-up questions on what those reductions are, what they mean, you all have my email, easy to reach, you know, call me, email me anytime. I'm more than happy to sit down with you one-on-one, sit down with your board, take a phone call, whatever I can do to help explain deeper or better any of the numbers that we reviewed this evening. Back to you.
If there's no questions, we'll just proceed with closing out all of our meetings.
You want to go first?
Is there any school committee forum, anyone from our board that has any comments? If you guys want to close, then I'll close ours last. Make a motion.
You're going to motion to adjourn for the finance committee?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, a second?
Second.
Okay. All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:24 PM. Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Matthew. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Any motion to-
I don't think anyone would be opposed.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second by Tara. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight.